I'd like to call this meeting of the Elkhorn Common Council to order. It's July 7, 2025 at 5:30. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Kim Schroeder.
Here.
Peter Hartley.
Here.
Gary Payson Jr.
Here.
Ron Denwoodie.
Here.
Scott McCleary.
Here.
Ken Minow.
Here.
Dan Roberts.
Here.
Next, we've got public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Would anyone like to be heard tonight? Asking again, anyone for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda, where we have one item, the Legislative and Regulatory Meeting Minutes of June 16, 2025, and the council meeting minutes of June 16, 2025.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for both.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor? I opposed. The minutes are approved. Report of city officers. For the mayor's report, we just have the honor of swearing in two new people for the Elkhorn Area Fire Department, Andrew Yoder and Justin Cohen. If you would come up right here, I think, yeah, come up together.
If people want to.
Elaine here.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America. Sorry.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
I will support those who I serve with.
I will support those who I serve with.
And those who I am sworn to protect.
And those who I sworn to protect.
I will faithfully and impartially without reservation.
I will faithfully and impartially without reservation.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter.
Discharge my duties as a firefighter.
Of the Elkhorn Area Fire Department.
Of the Elkhorn Area Fire Department.
Under the appointing of the department.
Under the appointing of the department.
And according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
And according to the laws of the state of Wisconsin.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
To the best of my skills and abilities.
I accept the self-imposed and self-enforced obligation.
I accept the self-imposed and self-enforced obligation.
As my responsibility.
As my responsibility.
And make these promises freely.
And make these promises freely.
Without mental reservations or purposes of evasion.
Without mental reservations or purposes of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
The duties of your office upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, we've got the city minister.
I think normally this is the point where you let everybody leave if they want to leave.
Well, we could do that. You're more than welcome to see us see government in action. But if you'd like to forego that, you're welcome.
Thanks for showing up.
Yeah.
So just a couple of things. One, I wanted to, again, just thank the Public Works Department, particularly Ken Babcock, our certified pool operator, for the great job they did getting the pool back in operation in time for the Fourth of July fireworks, which were a week ago. So thanks again to DPW for all their efforts on that. We did file our petition last Tuesday for the railroad crossing. I want to thank Eileen. Elaine, sorry. Yeah, I know, I know. And I say that because Elaine has got a coworker, Eileen. So all three of us were emailing each other extensively. I think I talked to more with Eileen and Elaine in that 24-hour period than probably my family in the last month. But so we had a lot of back and forth, but we did get that filed. So and now wait for the railroad along with Creekside to submit their response. Obviously, Creekside is supportive of it, so they'll be filing some exhibits in support of our petition. We'll see what the railroad has to say, and then we'll have a rebuttal period. Again, the hearing is in mid-August, so things are moving along pretty quickly on that. I just want to mention, too, we did just get late on Thursday the Sugar Creek Ridge Development Agreement from there, from our attorney. So we'll try to get that to Newman as quickly as possible. I know Newman's eager for Sugar Creek Ridge to get that going. So hopefully we can get that reviewed by them here quickly. And then also I just want to mention, and I'll sort of defer to Katie. We've got a Boy Scout troop here tonight. Katie was like, if you want to do an introduction on that as to who's here.
Everyone, this, could you stand up, gentlemen? This is Elkhorn, two, four, and three representatives working on their citizenship and their community heritage. The troop has actually just awarded the largest troop in the Rock River District, which is Rock, Wallworth, and Jefferson County. There's 30 of them awarded. So they're here to see government in action.
So no pressure to the auditor tonight, but hopefully you can spice that presentation up with scouts. But that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Adam. Next, we've got a report from the 2024 audit. Riley, I'm guessing you're up. Thanks for getting here. I understand you were stuck in traffic.
Milwaukee traffic was not good today, so I thought I had enough time.
Can you push your three button, the three dots?
Three dots, that's the mute.
Yeah, but I think it's, there you go.
Okay, not as it were?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right, I will start out with introductions. So this executive audit summary takes bits and pieces from the financial statement booklet that you each have, kind of gives a summary of all the different disclosures that we discuss in the letters that are communicated to you throughout the audit process. So if you want to move to the next slide, we can skip a couple through here. And Amber, the principal on this of the city audit is also joining us on Zoom today. So I don't know if she's going to introduce herself or not, otherwise I can.
I am here. Sorry, thank you for, I'm on Zoom. I'm going to let Riley kind of run with the show. But I am the principal on the engagement for the city. I've been doing state and local government for the past 16 years. So if there's anything, any questions or anything like that, feel free to interject as Riley goes, or if I can answer anything, I'd be happy to do so.
So my name is Riley Hutter. I've been the in-charge auditor for the city audit for the past three years now. And I have experience with other similar audits with municipalities, counties, utilities, I guess with over seven years of experience doing so. I'm a U of M Milwaukee grad, enjoy getting outdoors in the summer, softball, golf. So just a little about me. So the required communications and summary of the audit results is what I'm going to go through next. The required communications are a piece of our governance communication letter that is within the first piece of that financial statement booklet. But I'm, there's a lot of wording in there. I'm going to go over, highlight some key points and summarize the, I guess, main topics that we'd like to address within there. So our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards is to provide an opinion on the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. We review the internal controls within the city and use a risk-based approach to do so. So we evaluate the internal controls, determine scopes, and that's how we decide our test of transactions. So we then express opinions based on those tests. Throughout the audit, we're here in, usually early January, end of December, to do some interim procedures, get the audit started. And then we come back for final fieldwork to do our final testing, tie out a balance sheet account, sheet accounts and things like that. So within the governance communication letter, note one to the financial statements summarizes all of your accounting policies. So the majority of those have stayed the same over the past year. There was one change related to GESV 101, a new GESV accounting standard related to sick leave and compensated absences and your unpaid leave at year end. And I'll discuss that in a little bit here. But that's just in the governance communication that is disclosed as a change in accounting policy. There were no unusual transactions noted. Within the governance communication letter, we do disclose management judgments and accounting estimates. We do review those each year. And those two estimates that are significant are your IBNR for self-insurance and ambulance and fire allowance. So we review, I guess, the procedures and inputs that management makes that go into those estimates, and we evaluate those annually. We also communicate that the disclosures are clear, adequate, and complete, and also lists, I guess, all the other required supplementary information that's included within those financial statements. There were no disagreements with management that had to be communicated, as usual. That's typical. And another letter within your financial statements is the management representation letter. Each year, management signs that letter, taking responsibility for, these are your financial statements. We prepare those on behalf of you, but they are the city's financial statements. There were no consultations with any consultants, independent, other independent accountants, no major issues, and no difficulties performed throughout the audit. Continuing the required communications, there were a few corrected misstatements. So what these are, are misstatements that are corrected throughout the audit process. It's journal entries that we propose, and the city makes those journal entries, you know, agrees, we agree everything between each other throughout the audit process. And some of those larger adjustments have been common in what we've been doing in the past. Some of those, I guess, larger ones to highlight, meter expenses to sewer, depreciation, capital additions and removals. Those can be pretty complex areas throughout the audit process. So we work with Cory and try to, I guess, reduce those journal entries made and try to help out where the city can improve with those journal entries. So there were no uncorrected misstatements. That's saying, you know, there were no journal entries that we proposed that the city did not make on their books. So every journal entry that was proposed was made. The summary of audit results. So going back to where I stated that we present our opinion, we did issue an unmodified clean opinion, which is the best and highest level that you would want to expect every year. And again, this is similar to in previous years and what you strive for each year. Internal control over financial reporting under government auditing standards. This is the two findings that you'll see in the audit report. And again, these are repeat findings from previous years, so nothing should seem new to you. The first one is the adjustments to financial records. And that's kind of what I just went over, where there are some larger adjustments related to capital that we do make throughout the audit process. So that is disclosed as a finding, and we work each year to try to improve that and, you know, get those adjustments down to a minimal level. The second finding we have here is preparation of the financial statements. So since CLA is preparing these financial statements on the city's behalf, that's why that has to be disclosed as a finding. And this is very common with many other cities of your size. The financial benefits for the city to prepare this whole booklet don't outweigh, you know, the time and effort needed. So this is a very, very common, and you see it with many other cities of your size. So that's nothing to, I guess, be aware of, so. And any other, there were no other compliance or any other issues noted throughout the audit process that had to be disclosed. So I'll move into some financial statement numbers. And these come, all of these numbers come directly from your financial statements. So if you have any questions, where things are coming from, we can page back into the financial statement booklet. But just know that's where things are getting pulled from. So the composition of your fund balance is mostly unassigned. Eight percent of that is assigned, and I believe that is sick leave balances that have been set aside in the past, that there was an amount set aside for. I guess separating that out from your unassigned balances. This next slide is your minimum fund balance policy. So as a city, you do have a policy that sets the minimum there. And if you compare your unassigned fund balance and total fund balance to that policy, it has stayed fairly steady over the last four years here, and you are well above, well above your minimum fund balance policy. This next slide breaks out the composition of that, of your governmental funds, fund balances. And it just shows all the different pieces that are either restricted for a specific use, assigned for a specific use, or that unassigned that we talked about earlier. Overall, slight decrease overall. You can see the fluctuations, I guess, throughout debt service that'll fluctuate based on your timing of the payments and debt issued. A lot of the others are fairly similar, and I will touch on the general fund, budget to actual here in a little bit, too, that I think is a little more important that we would want to look at, so. The general fund, budget to actual revenues, so actual revenues compared to your final budgeted amounts were actually more than budgeted by about $300,000. Your actual expenditures were below your budgeted amount by about $125,000. So overall, that's, you know, good, and I guess what you want to see. So there's a $500,000 variance there that you were excessive revenues under or over expenditures. So the change here I wanted to highlight really is between your other financing sources. So your transfers in were a little lower than budget, and your transfers out were higher than budget. There was no transfer out of that $700,000 budgeted there. So that leaves you with an overall decrease in your general fund balance. But it really is from those two pieces, if that makes sense. Any questions on that at all?
Riley, just for council clarification, the transfer out he's talking about was because you guys approved moving some of the excess funds that we had from last year's budget to the capital improvement plan, I should say, the capital fund account. So that's why you're seeing that transfer out is because it was intended to go to help reduce the amount of money we'd have to borrow for some capital projects, so.
Yep, yep, all capital related for that transfer, so. Next is your long-term obligations note. So this details out each one of your different pieces of your long-term obligations. So you have your general obligation debt, debt premium, compensated expenses, any revenue bonds, and any other borrowing-related items. So what this does is shows your total ending balances as of December 31, and then any amounts due within a year from there. So I think this is a helpful note, just to see the different long-term obligations that are outstanding and what's issued or paid off during the year. It kind of gives you a picture of what's going on debt-related. The next piece of this is breaks down your general obligation debt line a little more and kind of lays out a bigger picture of all of your different general obligation debt issuances. So you can see from 2015 through 2024, you do have leveled debt service payments through about 2029. So that's something to keep an eye on as you're, you know, looking at your tax levy. And just to know that debt service stays pretty level through 2029. This next slide is your legal debt margin. So legal debt margin shows your statutory limit of, you know, the debt you're able to issue. So as your equalized value changes throughout the city, this number changes as well. And I think the next, actually, we'll go to the next slide here. So this kind of gives you a better idea of how that works. This is just a graph of the numbers behind that note. So as your equalized value changes and goes up, your statutory limit for new debt also goes up. And each of these lines are just kind of different benchmarks between, within here. So there's a 65% of your debt limit line, 50% limit of that line, and then your outstanding geo-debt line. So your outstanding geo-debt line has increased over the last four or five years, but in comparison to your equalized value, you know, it has decreased in comparison to that. So that's just something to kind of keep in mind when you're budgeting for capital projects and things like that. It's important to, you know, focus on planning three, five, seven years out and how, you know, your debt is going to change in relation to this limit, so. In addition to your general obligation bonds, you also do have revenue bonds. So as you can see, there were, I think, four different issuances of revenue bonds in the past year. So that's just something to note as well. And thinking, and I guess those are related to, you know, more capital projects, and it was about $3 million, I think, last year, so. Net revenues compliance test. So we do look at your compliance as it relates to debt covenants and things like that. And, you know, there's some different calculations on here, but this is just to say that you are meeting all of your compliance requirements related to debt, you know, for the sewer, water, and electric utility. It needs to, I guess, meet certain requirements, and that is something that we look at during the audit. And you are in compliance of all of those. So I'll switch over now to just some key points related to the different utilities. The sewer utility has operational cash of 1.5 million. Restricted cash is a good portion of that. There are a separate portion of that of 1.3 million, and an unrestricted net position of 1.2 million. The cash flows for the sewer utility did decrease about $500,000. I guess my point related to that is just to, it's important to evaluate annually rates in conjunction with capital needs for each utility and the sources of the funds, you know, that need to, that you need to complete the capital projects. So whether that's bonding, grants, or if you're using cash, just make sure that those rates are evaluated. So just to ensure your cash flow is related to that. Again, with your water utility, operational cash of $400,000, restricted cash of $2.7 million, and an unrestricted net position of 1.6 million. There was negative cash flow of about $694,000. But I will say that the net position, I believe, for the water utility did increase significantly. Your new rates were implemented, and that really drove revenues up to, you know, keep that, get the needed cash and revenue to sustain those, you know, any capital needs in the future. The electric utility has operational cash of 3.6 million, restricted cash of 2.4 million, and an unrestricted net position of 5.8 million. So the electric utility did have a positive change in cash and increased it in about 1.4 million. Solid waste does not have any cash. They had a negative net position of 84,000. One of our, I guess, recommendations for solid waste is just to consider, you know, if any changes are needed related to this, it could possibly move to a special revenue fund with a 2026 budget. fund with a 2026 budget versus an enterprise fund as the rates right now are not sufficient to cover any expenses or generate generate a cash flow. So it's just just something to look at in the future for solid waste.
And I'll just add, I'll just add this, that that's really just a reporting mechanism for your financial statements as it doesn't necessarily meet the the definition of an enterprise fund at this point. And we see this commonly where there's some movement between whether it's a solid waste fund or a stormwater of really where does that fit? But just the consideration as you go into your 2026 budget process that we noted, and the amounts in there are fairly small, but just kind of trying to align that with the intended purpose.
So observations and upcoming GASB standards. Amber, were you gonna, did you want to take this, or should I?
Yeah, I can. If you go to the next slide, just some comments and observations. One of the previous recommendations we had was updating policies and procedures as technology changes, personnel changes. But then, as the city kind of gets into maybe some more grant opportunities and things like that, it's important to have those updated policies and procedures. The procedure piece of it is really what the internal controls are within those policies. So we've been we've been working with Cory and and Chris and and their teams to work on getting some of that updated. It is not something that's going to happen overnight. It's going to be a continuous to continuous change and continuous improvement, and it should be an evolving process year to year. So that is something that that is currently in the works between the city and ourselves. If you go to the next slide, just some update or some upcoming GASB standards that'll be applicable to the city. GASB 102 is certain risk disclosures. So there may be, say there's a significant customer in the utilities, if something should happen to them or you're predicting that something, maybe, maybe there's some things going on that would have a significant impact on the city, that may warrant a disclosure in the financial statements just to inform the users. So that would be an example of of GASB 102. GASB 103, it relates to the financial reporting model. A lot of that, as it would affect the city, would relate primarily to the enterprise funds, and that's where kind of I'm kind of preparing that solid waste piece as well of really defining what should be where and what the operating differentiating between operating revenues and expenses and non-operating revenues and expenses. They want to be as detailed as possible, but then also where we put the budgetary comparison reports, which is just a location within the report. And then on the next slide, GASB 104 relates to capital assets, requires some separate, I'm going to say some additional breakouts in the capital asset footnote. But then where this could become a bigger play in the city is if there's capital assets held for sale and how those are handled. So we'll continue to work with the city on those as they come up. There is one applicable here for 2025 and then two for 2026. And then if there's any questions, but before we get to the questions, I want to make sure I just want to touch on a couple of things that really say thank you to Cory and Chris and their team. We can be kind of a pain when we come in and want documents and want to work through things, but I think that this year went extremely smooth, and we want to make sure that that the improvements Riley talked about that in terms of the adjusting journal entries and so forth, and the work that they've done and working with the utilities and DPW to get that information a lot more timely and complete. That has been a huge help, both for for us but also for for the city so that Cory can get her numbers tied out a lot quicker and make sure that we're not making as significant adjustments all the time. So I think that'll continue to evolve and improve, so we appreciate it. So so thank you for that, and hopefully you saw that improvement as well on your end. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to Riley and open it up for questions.
Yeah, I guess just a big thank you to Cory and staff from me, too. You know, some of our recommendations that we talked about in the fall, you know, are just night and day difference with, we really appreciate you taking those, you know, recommendations to heart and, you know, following through then in spring. It it makes the audit process a whole lot easier and is is much appreciated, so. Any questions?
Not to belabor the point, but I also want to thank Cory and Chris for taking the lead on the audit, and I think this one thing's that when we hired our new treasurer, Chris, almost two years ago now, you know, he came from, his career was auditing, so we were really excited about having him in-house, and I know he gets excited about the audit time of the year, and will find stuff that nobody catches in terms of the draft documents. So so we really do appreciate Chris and obviously Cory for her all her work on it, so. And just on a side note, too, I do want to, when Riley talks about, you know, some improvements and changes, a lot of that has also been with the utility department, particularly water and electric, a lot of the capital asset issues that we've had in terms of documenting assets, transactions, depreciation, et cetera. I know Don had worked a lot on that last year, too, with Chris and Cory, so I know Don's sitting in the audience, so thank you, Don, too, because I know she's had to really get in the weeds of that, so.
I think that's all for me. Any any questions?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have Katie James, the community grant writer, with an update.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie James. I'm the community grant writer for the city of Elkhorn. I'm here tonight to talk about the EEDA grant and give you an update on how it's been going. For those of you who might be unfamiliar, the Elkhorn Economic Development Alliance is an independent group that is given an allotment of funds from the city to navigate economic development projects. It is a group of seven members that is overseen by Derek Dioria, who also oversees WACDA, the Walworth County Economic Development Alliance. And through that allocation of funds, we have created a grant, and that's what I'm here tonight to talk about. Well, I can just sketch it out for you as well. There it is. Thanks, Matt. Next slide, please. Just a little history on the grant itself. EEDA was formed in 2014. The grant was actually begun in 2018. You heard at the last city council meeting, those funds had previously been given to the HPC when it disbanded a decade earlier, then the funds transferred over to the EEDA to manage ourselves. Those are the members of our board, oh, back up a step, Matt, thanks. Those are the members of our board, and they are the ones who vote on our grant applications that we receive. The allocation from this body varies depending on the funds that are available in the Community Development Fund or how ambitious you think that we will be that year, somewhere between $20,000 and $50,000 historically. From 2018 to 2023, there was a total of 19 projects, $163,534 in funds that were issued. At that time, the grant was managed differently. The application was 11 pages long. It was extremely rigorous, and we were finding as time went on that our local business owners and property owners were less interested in participating in the program because it was more hassle than it was worth. So in 2024, I was issued the challenge of getting our business and property owners engaged again in the grant program to want to improve their facades and their buildings in the city of Elkhorn. While that was happening, there were two projects going on that I'll talk about right now. 325 East Court Street, the old Napa Parts building that is a butts against the Walworth County Fairgrounds, that is an EEDA grant. And on the bottom of these slides, you're about to see something interesting. The EEDA investment dollar and then the owner's investment dollar. So at that time, it was a 20% investment match, up to $100,000 is the old. They did some tuck pointing, new window sills, painted the building, and made some interior improvements to update it as an auto body shop, which is Varney Automotive today. Also, this is 5 West Walworth Street in downtown Elkhorn. That is the old Toe-to-Toe Dance Studio there that's right in the center. Haley owns it now. It's PCB Studios, which is pretty crazy beautiful, and she did quite a bit of work, as you can see here. The EEDA gave her $20,000, which she then matched with $109,000. It needed extensive structural improvements embracing in the basement. The whole main level was gutted, as well as created an apartment upstairs, which had not been previously there. But it was through the process of those two grants and projects with those homeowner or property owners, Chris Clapper worked with Bob Lancer on the Court Street project, Derek and I worked with Haley on Walworth Street, that we really fine-tuned the grant and figured out a way that we wanted to make it as easy and applicable as possible for these property owners to have access to those funds. And so we created the new grant, which I've coined the big grant, the building improvement grant. Next slide, please, Matt. The major changes that we made with the program was from feedback that I received in property owners going door to door, talking to everyone, and figuring out what happened. Why did we stop participating? And from that came this. As I mentioned, 11 pages down to four pages, they said it was too long to do the application, and we also shrunk the timeframe. So rather than applying every 10 years, we lowered it to every five years a property owner can apply. We also gave the opportunity for not only the property owners themselves, but the business operating outside of that or within that property had the opportunity to apply with the owner's permission. So those longtime property owners that didn't want to invest in the buildings, the businesses themselves made the opportunity or gave received the opportunity to invest in those properties. The second, we narrowed our improvement target area from feedback that we received from you all and from residents of the city of Elkhorn is that we wanted to focus on downtown Elkhorn and really give the downtown property owners the best opportunity to receive these funds. They are first come, first served. We wanted to give downtown the first chance at the funds. Number three, we focused our improvements on what we can see. We changed the scoring metric and weighted it on facade improvements specifically. We went 50-50 match for smaller projects under $10,000, and then beyond that, we went up to 25% on the bigger projects, up to $100,000, to make those improvements more viable for our property owners. That is the goal, to make these properties commercially viable. So it could be exterior improvements, which we prioritized, as I mentioned. It could be an HVAC system, a new roof, those structural improvements that are needed for those older buildings downtown. Two things did not change. It must be completed within 12 months still, the improvements, and any improvement that we fund has to stay with the building. What I like to say to the property owner, if you decide to leave, retire to Florida, the investment that the city of Elkhorn has made remains within the city of Elkhorn. The other thing that I really like about the new grant is that we embedded collaboration into it. Before you can apply, you have to talk to me, Derek Dioria, or Chris Clapper about the project that you're planning. It's not because we want to police, it's because we are trying to get folks engaged in the program, and we want to talk through the project to maximize the funding that they're able to do and talk through the terms.
I just have a question about the statement just you just made. The guy moves to Florida, the investment stays in Elkhorn, what does that mean?
So I can't buy a sign. I can't call in Katie's clothing wear.
Take the sign to Sacramento.
Exactly. So it has to stay in Elkhorn, so I won't buy your sign.
Gotcha. Thank you.
No, thank you for clarifying that. The other thing that you have to do as part of the new grant application is talk to our building and zoning department. I found that there was a big disconnect between those departments and our property owners. There was some intimidation where they were nervous about talking to Allison about what they were planning on doing. There was some confusion about what our ordinances would allow. This required a collaboration between them to talk through those projects before they made the investment on the design, on the plan, and on those properties. And she had great ideas, worked within the ordinance, figured out what permits were needed before they even began the project as part of the grant application. The last thing is that we made a commitment to our property owners as part of this application that we would manage and handle their applications within a month, within 30 days, because we wanted property owners to begin the projects as quickly as possible to make those improvements. So once they submit at the first Thursday of a month, the following week it goes to the EEDA for review and approval, and then the following week or two weeks after that, depending on the calendar, it goes to Planning Commission for design and review approval. So the most, the longest a property owner has to wait right now has been 14 to 21 days before they can begin their project. The last was the dollars. I got an increase influx from this organization, thank you guys so much, of $50,000 this year. So let's talk about the projects. With those funds, what we did with them. 1 West Walworth, which is our Someplace Else building, masonry, tuck pointing, and window sills, a smaller project, but with that, because of that, they were able to turn around and invest those funds in part of our mural. 12 South Wisconsin, this is Guest House by Friends. It is actually currently being worked on today. I saw them out painting. It's getting a new front door and repainting. They're having a grand opening next month. This is going to be a site for after-hours people who are living with wanting to visit with other people who are dealing with alcoholism, drug abuse, and lots of supports in place in that group. So it's going to be the Guest House by Friends. 20 South Wisconsin Street is Station 20. They're taking an innovative approach to outdoor dining, which is limited in our downtown as we know. They're doing an overhead hanging door, which will open up the front of their space with a new window that was blown out anyway, and doing some masonry tuck pointing to allow their patrons to have some fresh air while they dine. 21, so now we're jumping across the street, South Wisconsin, the old Driven Nutrition Building. This is actually a building from 1870, is the oldest photo that I have of it. They're going to be removing the awning, returning the transom windows above so it'll look a little closer to the J. Roberts Building. And also, the most expensive improvement is the new roof. So you can see the EEDA versus the owner investment on that one. 2224, this is actually two separate parcels, but looks like one unified building. This is the Queen Nails Building in Flickcroft Coon, and they actually, the windows just came in, they should be starting in the next couple of weeks on that improvement, but it is going to take a solid five months. Pizza Alley, Doug Cravenger, one of my favorite people. He is going to give it a fresh new look because he really likes the appeal of our downtown, but his building that was built in 1952 never had that. So he is going to put a new facade cap on his building, brick veneer, paint, awning, door, and windows. He's making a substantial investment in our downtown. This was one of the first projects we worked on with the new application. This is Peter Boz's building in Kelly Boz. 32 South Wisconsin, you can see the before on the left, the after is quite dramatic. As part of this, it's why I love the collaboration. It's talking through, what do you want to achieve this with this building? What business do you want to appeal to? And how can we make it fit within the framework of our downtown and current ordinances? This really is a triumph of what we can achieve when we are all working together. Lastly, is the 49 North Wisconsin, Friends on the Square is actually a past recipient of the EEDA grant, going through another round, getting a new roof, a new windows along the north side. The cost of the roof alone is just shy of $40,000, so a substantial investment. Summary of the 2425, the city's EEDA investment in those 11 projects was $115,924. The reason that's higher than what we had previously discussed is because we were able to reclaim some unused funds from previous years. The property owner investment in balance to that, $324,621 for a total 12-month investment in our downtown, $440,545. Substantial, what a little bit of seed money can do to reengage our property owners and make some great things happen for our downtown. As you noticed, primarily, it was concentrated on South Wisconsin Street. That was identified as an area that needed some improvement. That was identified as an area that needed some improvement, so we focused on that. Although any downtown property was eligible for it, those were the people that I went after. Encouraged, got excited about, and then walked through the process together. I know of, if you can switch the slide, there are five more downtown projects. There are five more property owners that are excited and eager to participate with the program. However, I have $2,245 left. I understand that's my cap for the year, and I respect that. But I would also respectfully ask for another $50,000 allocation next year. We're talking about a complete restoration of a building that is being used as an office space right now into something spectacular. I'd tell you, but I can't. And then four other major projects. But it's that combined investment, that little bit of seed money that this body can create with the community development investment, and we can create great things. I would like to continue this in downtown, at least for the next year or two, and then maybe expand it back out into another area that we see could use the biggest improvement. Any questions?
I think it looks awesome.
Thank you. There's a lot of work in those little pictures. I'm glad that you like them.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you.
Next, we've got unfinished business. A discussion of possible decision regarding additional conditions that gets to satisfy prior to issuance of a new liquor license for Class E wine and Class B fermented malt beverage for the glass garage, Abigail Wilson, 100 Clark Street. Did you have something on this? I've seen the packet. I guess who wants to take this to explain what's going on here?
All it is, is our L and R committee conditionally approved that new liquor license application upon approval of their occupancy permit. We later found out that they also had to apply for their conditional use permit, which they did. And that will be sent to the Plan Commission on July 17.
And was your recommendation that we approve the license?
Conditionally approve it upon receiving their occupancy and their conditional use permit, yes.
Well, if they don't have the conditional use permit, we can't approve it. They won't issue it, I don't think.
Right, we won't issue it until it goes through Plan Commission, and it gets accepted through them.
I may have a motion to approve that conditionally. We've got a motion and a second to approve that conditionally. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, on to new business. We've got discussion of possible decision regarding proposed development agreement between the city of Elkhorn and Belinsky Homes for construction of Harvest Point condos and villas.
Yeah, it's been two years in the making here, back and forth and back and forth, but we finally reached a point now of their moving forward on it. So I would make a motion to approve it.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding ordinance number 2025-14, an ordinance to rezone a portion of parcel tax key 00040A located at 308 East Centralia Street from M1 Light Manufacturing to IRS Single Family Residence District. This is the second reading. I guess we didn't waive the first reading at the last meeting. So we're, we passed it, so that was the first reading. Now we need, this will be the second reading. Is that parcel in Centralia where they were buying some property to create a backyard?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding execution of payment application number one from the Wannasek Corporation for the 2025 Elkhorn Street project in the amount of $387,262.28.
I'll make a motion to pay that.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any questions? A roll call, please.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Ken Minell?
Yes.
Gary Payson Jr.?
Yes.
Ron Dunwoodie?
Yes.
Scott McCleary?
Yes.
Dan Roberts?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we've got a discussion of possible decision regarding proposed memorandum of understanding between the Walworth County Sheriff's Office and Walworth County Entities for Storm Siren Upgrades. Who'd like to opine on this? Go ahead, Adam.
All right, well, the county is using some of their radio, some of the funds from the radio project they just completed. They basically have some extra funds, as I understand it. And they've offered to pay approximately $7,200 per storm siren to upgrade it if the city agrees to pay the maintenance costs going forward. And there's like a subscription maintenance fee that we pay, about $250 per storm siren. So certainly would be financially advantageous for the city. I know we've had to spend quite a bit of money the last couple of years because of the storm sirens being outdated. You know, the cases are broken. We've had issues with the batteries. So I mean, it seems like a pretty...
No brainer.
It would seem like that, but yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve it then.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we've got discussion of possible decision regarding the proposed Rescue Squad Mutual Aid Agreement between the city of Elkhorn and the town of Delavan. Who would like to jump on this one? Chief?
So, so far this year, Town of Delavan... So so far this year, Town of Delavan has responded into our city approximately. I think it's almost 30 times. I don't know the exact count as of right now, but... With the MABUS agreement, looking at the MABUS agreement, understanding mutual aid, under the MABUS rules, unless it goes to a box level for like a life safety type of thing, you're not, it is, the rescue side of it is not covered under it. Talking to other chiefs in the area, they're more than willing, if we have a fire, we have a bad accident, we're out there covering it, to come in for an ambulance call. It's the regular, everyday things where we're dropping two, three, four, five. Once in a while, we've had six at one time. We need help. And we're only running, we're staffing two ambulances today, is what we're staffing. So anything over two calls, unusually calling in another ambulance from an outside jurisdiction. With the understanding that LaGrange, when I deal with LaGrange, they're 100% volunteer. If we can clear an ambulance from a hospital, they'd rather get turned around and go back. So Town of Delavan is asking for whatever they get out of insurance, and I think, what was it, 600? 600 per call, which honestly is above the going rate. It's not that bad.
The only thing I'll just add to that is I know the mayor asked me earlier today about, you know, what the approximate, just using Sugar Creek as an example, in terms of how many calls do they have? And what's the average, you know, average cost to the town? Just get a sense as to how is that $600 figure compared to what we're charging the towns? It works out to be about $462.86 using the 2025 allocation applied to the 2024 actual call numbers, because obviously, we're only halfway through 25. So it's a little bit less than, or I should say, what Delavan is proposing to charge us is more than what it averages for our towns, but it's not a huge difference. So, but granted, they are also getting the, well, they would be getting the insurance, you know, payment or the ambulance fee on top of the 600, so they would be making more money on that. But the reality is, as the chief said, I mean, the department right now can't really afford, you know, to staff another ambulance. So there's really not a lot of other good options. And to be clear, they would be paying us this fee too, if, you know, for any of our calls. So it's going both ways, it's not just us paying them.
I'm curious, how many of these calls are in the direct city versus the supporter areas that we have? Do we know that?
Most, I do not have an exact number, but most of the time, if we're coming, they're coming into the city. Usually, if it's going to be down in the Geneva Township area, depending on where it's at, I'm calling Lake Geneva. If it's up toward Sugar Creek, I'm using LaGrange if possible. And then up in Lafayette, I'm calling East Troy.
Thank you.
So this mutual aid agreement pay schedule, as the mayor mentions, it's reciprocal. Is it reciprocal for everybody? Like, does Sharon do this with Walworth? Does Town of Delavan do it for Darian? You know, is it like countywide?
I think because of Town of Delavan, they just started a staffing model with people on the floor. And I think it's two or three people a day. This is taking their ambulance that is staffed out of their jurisdiction. And I think that's where the town manager had an issue with it.
Okay.
And the only thing I just would add is that the agreement can be terminated. You know, there's no, it's not like a lifetime contract. So should at some point we want to terminate this, we can send them a notice. I don't remember, is it like 30 or 90 days? Okay, so.
And how are we going to absorb these costs? $680 every time they come into the city of Elkhorn on a mutual aid request? Where's that money coming from?
Well, I mean, it's going to come out of the EMS budget. I mean, EMS, at least the EMS budget does generate revenue. I mean, doesn't generate revenue, but we do get, you know, approximately $700, $800,000 in, you know, ambulance fees that we collect. Obviously, it doesn't nearly cover the cost of the service. But I mean, it's just going to have to come out of the budget and then share it among, you know, and just go towards the overall operating expenses.
So based upon what we project and what you've already shown to this point in 2025, we'll be able to continue to at least run it this way with the Town of Delavan if we vote that way through 2025?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, let's say you have 18 calls. Because they talked about they had had 18 at the time they sent us the agreement, and we had one. So that's just a little over $10,000. So if you figure halfway through the year, it's $10,000, and if that trend were to continue, it might end up being $20,000 by the end of the year, but it's a pretty small fraction of the overall EMS budget.
And the Town of Delavan doesn't do this for, like, the city of Delavan?
So the city of Delavan rejected it, and they contracted in with medics. So city of Delavan is 100% volunteer fire department. Their paramedic level service is provided by medics. And then they just supplemented any additional call if they can get staffing in to go do it. I know they've sent a couple people to paramedic school. Their inspector, their full-time inspector just went to medics school. So city of Delavan rejected it, but they contracted another company, and I don't know what the contract, but what medics is getting for them to run all their EMS.
Maybe we should look at medics. I'd like to at least know what the cost is. I mean, is it, you know, and maybe they wouldn't do it. Maybe they won't, you know, they won't sign a contract with us or engage in a contract with us where they're only called into service, you know, 18 times in six months. Maybe they wouldn't do it, I don't know. I'd like to know what it costs. Am I wrong?
Are there any other mutual aid agreements out there for Rescue Squad involving the city of Elkhorn or any of its neighbors?
We don't have any that I know of.
Not that I know of.
So up to this point, if you called them, they weren't getting anything from us?
No, sir. Unless they transported, they got, usually the transporting agency gets your, whatever the insurance payment is.
But they weren't getting $600 or whatever?
No, sir.
Okay. What is the timeliness of this agreement? Are they, they sent it us? Are they looking for it back right away? Or does anyone have a thought on that? Or to Scott's point, you know, we could do some more investigation. But maybe we could also take the tack, approve this till the end of this year, and then do a thorough study of it before next year.
I think that sort of makes sense, that we have to provide ambulance service. This is the least expensive way that we know of now to provide those overrun calls. But we can void that contract in 90 days. So if medics came out, or we could figure some other way out of it, this is something we could get out of pretty quick. And then we're not paying them X amount of dollars. We're only paying them when they show up, I guess.
What's the, I don't know, I don't know, sure if I can explain this, but when we drive around, I know when I was a third shifter, you'd see a medics ambulance just sitting in a parking lot with two people in it, just waiting to be sent somewhere, or Superior or Bell ambulance. Who, why would they, like, why do they just sit in our county? And who pays that? And anybody?
I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, when, from Milwaukee County, there's so much service fund, so they don't have to sign anything with the city of Rowanatosa. They just get it. I don't know, when you get out and the population gets less dense, who covers that?
Do we still, does anyone know, do we still do that with the local ambulance, private ambulance?
I know Superior is strictly interfacility. They do no, they don't do any 911.
Okay. Okay. So somebody calls them up and says, Grandma needs a transport, and they come to the house and get her and take her, or whatever?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know. I don't like it. I just, I mean, I understand Town of Delavan's got to, you know, meet their budgetary requirements or whatever. And obviously, they're not getting good bang for their buck if it's 18 to 1 right now. I mean, I don't, can't really control how often we need them or how often they need us.
And chief, they would only come when you request them?
Correct. It's only if we're, if we're tapped out and we're asking for mutual aid. I'm not a big fan of it either, but at this point, I think it's our cheapest option outside of putting on more staff, which is going to be a recurring year-over-year expense.
Well, maybe we should do what the mayor suggested and go ahead and engage with them, but start looking immediately at longer-term possibilities that could take us in a different direction as early as January 1. I guess that's my motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And lastly, we have a discussion of possible decision regarding submitting a formal request to Walworth County Board of Supervisors to expedite a process for making a decision regarding the future of the county government center. Did everyone get a chance to look at that?
Again? Yes.
I guess, I guess we'd just like some clarity what they're thinking, so we can proceed with planning of our own, so.
This ties, this doesn't tie us toward through this asking, will you make up your mind so we can?
It would help us in our decision-making.
I'd make a motion to do that.
Got a motion and a second? Any, any discussion?
I guess, just a question, does the council want to, you know, are you asking them to make a decision within, you know, we're talking six months, a year, three months?
That was my question, what does expedite mean? Because you haven't worked in county government and I have, so.
Well, you've talked to them, Adam, I mean, what, you've talked to the county administrator. What's your feeling that he could, he could get them to make a decision on this? Their subcommittee's already talked about it.
Yeah, I just talked, because their subcommittee talked about it a year ago, and that's kind of where the conversation stopped. So I, that's why I can't even speculate as to how long it could take them, whether it's, yeah, I just don't, I don't know.
Well, I mean, if I could amend your motion to save, you know, I guess. Pardon me?
Save by the end of the year?
Or, or as timely as possible.
I wouldn't use that word. Government and timely don't work. Mayor, you had a facial expression.
Once in a while. I know, I think the end of the year might be putting too much pressure on them. I guess.
Why don't we ask for the end of the year? They say we can't accommodate you, then we know.
So I'm making my motion saying, you know, we would like to have some guidance from the county by the end of the year.
I would, I would recommend that it's more concrete than that. If we ask them for some guidance, okay, to reply to your email, we've looked into it, and it requires further thought, January one, twenty twenty-six.
So what would you like?
I don't know, I'm a little something with some more tea.
Elaine?
You could ask them if they can provide you with more concrete plans, what their intentions are. I mean, you can't force them to give you that, but you could certainly ask them to provide their, capital plan is the right word, or facility plan, or intentions.
Can we, can we, can we, can we address it in such a way that we would like to know specifically, do you plan to still be in this building as of Jan. one, twenty twenty-seven, or twenty-six, or twenty-nine, or twenty-eight, or whatever? Because you got the chiefs coming up here on what, January first of twenty thirty? You got to jump in or jump out, is that right, Joel? Twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty?
I think it's thirty-four, but.
Oh, okay, so we still got, I'm sorry. I knew, I knew it was thirty-something, because Captain Brandl mentioned it as the last.
Thirty-four. It's twenty thirty-four.
But it's twenty-nine that they have to make a commitment or something.
Right, that's my point, well, twenty-nine is right around the corner.
Yeah.
I mean, as silly as that sounds, twenty-nine is right around the corner. So can, can we, like, to Elaine's point, we can't force their hand, but can we respectfully ask, you know, it's impacting city development and city capital improvement potentially. Can you tell us, do you expect to be there by majority vote or whatever? I don't know how to, I mean, that's, that's for you guys to figure out how to write it. But I mean, if we just ask them for, you know, can you get back to us with your intentions by January first? That's not going to do us any good, and we're right back here again. So I don't know, what do you guys think, twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-six? I don't know. I mean, if they're, if they're planning on staying there till twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that tells me a lot about where I want to go with the potential fire department. If they say we're going to be out by January first of twenty twenty-seven, or whatever, that might impact a lot of other things, a lot of other plates that are spin. I don't know, like I said, come up with a magic date.
Or I'll amend my motion to say city staff.
Second.
What do you guys think is a good cutoff? I mean, as it relates specifically to the firehouse. If they, if they say we're planning on staying here till at least the end of twenty twenty-seven, does that change anything for us?
Yes. Yes?
I, yeah, I think everything's on the table, so.
But that's not what we were asked. We're asked, we're asked, do you want to submit a formal request? Yes, I want you to submit a formal request, that's what, that was my original motion. And second, it modified a couple times now.
Yeah, so, so why don't we go with that motion and let Adam do his thing?
Yes.
Okay, my thing may be to bring it back to you in another couple meetings if we hear back from the county as to.
That would be great.
If they want for.
That would be great, thank you.
You know which, you know what we want, you know where we're at, so.
All right, well, and just, you know, all kidding aside, part of the challenge is that, you know, it's tough to know, and you guys have talked about it, whether realistically, if the county says, you know, if they have intent to, you know, make a decision, they'll probably build a new building either there or somewhere else by twenty twenty-nine. Twenty, but it's hard to know what, what year, we need to know, you know, is it twenty-nine, is it twenty-eight, to Alderman McLory's point? And that's definitely a policy decision as to how long you guys are willing to, let's say, wait on doing a new facility, or whether you, you know, do temporary improvements on the existing structure to get by with intent on doing something more significant. And just, you know, hypothetically speaking, if you did a, you know, larger facility or something in twenty thirty, or, you know, years after that, can you get by up until then? And then the city, you know, uses the time over the next, you know, five years, let's say, to wait for the county to get their design, relocate. You work on a new design, you know, of that facility, we build up bond capacity, that kind of stuff, so.
So the county administrator, you and him had a conversation, and it was like, look, maybe you guys send us something that will help get it off-center. That's, I'm oversimplifying it, right? That's basically what he was, he was asking was, hey, maybe you guys could do an official resolution to maybe help the county get off-center to say, yeah, we're going to do it, or no, or we're just going to leave you hang. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's fair.
So by us trying, trying to provide something, maybe that will help push the county towards, say, yes, we're going to look at it in committee, or we're going to drag it out and just do whatever.
We have a motion and a second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, just one minute. Would, if we, if the city were to move down this path with the county, would it be more so, I guess, Adam, in your opinion, underneath like a memorandum of understanding? Do we ask them to engage in a memorandum of understanding based on certain terms? And?
Not, not yet, but if, if there were to be negotiations in the future, yeah, we definitely would want something in writing, because there's way too much at stake for us just to have a, you know, a verbal.
But this is the first step to try to, try to nudge one way or another.
That's why I was, not necessarily suggesting, but just questioning if that's not the path you go, is just to say, if we're interested in looking at a memorandum of understanding, memorandum of understanding, and that might get them off-center with it, I don't know, just a suggestion. Sorry.
Adam, I know who can help you.
I think Matt's volunteering to write that too, so, all right, sounds good, bud.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.